I did it all wrong too, I just looked at what you did.
Rick, how did your son's barbecue sauce turn out?
Great, he loved it. All his buddies think he's the barbecue master. He's gonna do that one for the game tomorrow.
I was gonna ask you if he's ever in the tailgate for tomorrow.
Well, he'll be out among Dad's cabin, he said I'm gonna do it on a 4 by.
I'm excited about that game, I don't watch football, but...
You're gonna make an exception?
Well, I think you kinda have to, don't you? I mean, this is like, this is like a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you know, and I love, I love that guy. I just like him, I like his philosophy, I like his leadership style, I think he's a good person. That, I love him, you know, I think he's, I think he's a good, I like, I just like, I like he handles controversy. He's always looking at ways to improve.
Okay.
Everything's a team, there's not like a star. You know, if you ever read that book, it's an organizational management book called From Good to Great, he, he kinda is that, that leadership style.
Yes, sir.
I think Corby is too. No, we're talking about me saying...
We're gonna call up meet to order, I would ask you if you have cell phones, please turn them off at this time. We have Councilmember George joining us this morning by visual, and I have not heard from Councilmember Marie yet, but she's on her way.
Okay, so you can ask her.
I would ask you to stand, and we will remain standing, and we will ask Councilmember Marie to lead us in the prayer.
Are we gonna do the pledge of allegiance first?
Pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and we have a special honor, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would like to pray with us, would you please remain standing? Dear God of us all, we thank you for this day, we thank you because you made it, and we share, rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come together one more time on behalf of the city of Madison. We ask that you please give us wisdom, knowledge, courage, strength, and hope for this city, and allow us to look over the agenda that is set before us on this day, amen?
Amen.
Thank you.
We'll have with us this morning Bob Hughes, he's a Chamber of Commerce Economic Development, he's gonna give us a report this morning, Bob, if you would come.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we may need to change the agenda, because I think they would like to go first.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That way we can get out of your way, and it's not really your business.
Go ahead.
So, we are with the City of Madison Gas Department, my name is Rhonda Bell, and I'm the administrative person over at the municipal building.
And I'm Rusty Johnson, gas and water service.
And we are here today to, for a liaison meeting that we are required to do by the federal government on a yearly basis with our public officials and emergency officials in Morgan and Walton Counties. We're gonna make this as short and painless as possible. We do have a sign-in sheet that we would appreciate you signing in on, and we also, I gave you a little packet, three pages, there's a few things there that I'd like for you to fill out. We have to have that information, we have to turn it in to the federal government, they come regularly to check on different things, and we leave those back. I think Ashley's gonna collect those for me, and I'll get them later.
Okay.
Today, we're gonna talk about natural gas basics, we're gonna talk about natural gas supply, who the natural gas operators are in the area, we're gonna identify pipelines, and we're gonna talk about natural gas safety.
Rhonda, Rhonda, Rusty, when you're speaking, just make sure you're close to the mic so that those attending virtually and live stream can hear you.
Okay. The purpose of this presentation is to communicate relevant information to emergency responders and public officials regarding natural gas and natural gas safety in the surrounding counties, and this is also to help meet our federal and state regulations. This is a slide that just shows, talks about how natural gas is formed, I'm sure we all learned that when we were in school. Natural gas is formed over millions of years, natural gas is an abundant fuel source. Natural gas applications, natural gas is used for industrial purposes, commercial purposes, residential purposes, electric power, pipeline fuel, vehicle fuel, and in the oil and gas industry. Benefits of natural gas is the cleanest burning fuel of all fossil fuels, and the majority of the natural gas used in the United States comes from North America. It's energy efficient, and it is a dependent source of energy with proven reserves for extended future use. Pipelines provide a means of moving the energy source of our nation from production areas to the end user, which is the customer. Pipelines are designed, installed, and maintained to ensure safe and reliable operations. The City of Madison is the natural gas provider in Morgan County. We also provide natural gas, we have customers in Walton County as well. We get our gas from Williams Pipeline Transco, it comes out of...
Texas. Texas.
Yeah. And it comes into our city gate, and the city gate is located up there, right off Highway 138 in Jersey, Georgia. And it comes into that gate, and the city gate measures the flow of gas from the transmission pipeline operator to the local utility, which is us, and the local utility usually reduces the operating pressure and may add an odorant. So, they add the odorant, which is the mercaptan, that gives it that rotten egg smell, they add it, we don't do that. Some operators have to add their own, but we don't, and we reduce the pressure, and the pressure up there is...
It comes in at 600 pounds, to us, we reduce it to 400. We bring it to the city, at the gate on Subway Drive, we cut it down to 50 pounds for distribution in the city.
So, from the city gate, we transport the natural gas via distribution pipes or mains to service the customers. Natural gas pipelines and distributions, distribution systems typically consist of steel or plastic, which are designed to operate various pressures. We only have steel and plastic in our system, we do not have any copper or cast iron or PVC. Steel is more resistant to third-party damage and may be operated at a higher pressure. Steel pipelines have a protective coating applied to them that help prevent corrosion. The plastic pipe, or the P pipe, is more commonly used in our distribution system, and our pipe is either yellow or orange.
Which would be there in one section of life, this is on Crawford Street, Williams Street, the line of Skyline Drive.
And this is just an example of some of the pipeline materials and what they look like. All right, when you talk about identifying pipelines, there are several ways to do that. Natural gas facilities are underground, and it may not always be apparent that there is a gas pipeline under the ground. Natural gas, water, phone, power, cable TV, sewer, storm drain, all this, stormwater, all those type of things are underground. And an important way to determine if pipelines are in your area is just to use your senses, just look around. That yellow, tall yellow marker that you see there, that is what we use to mark our pipelines. So, if you're driving around town, or you're driving up 278, or out toward, down Greensboro Highway, out 83, anywhere, and you see those markers, you know that there is a gas pipeline in the area. On the marker, it tells you who to notify if you suspect a gas leak, it has our dispatch number, it has call 911, it has the City of Madison on there, all of that information is on there. Also, other indicators is, um, gas right-of-ways, they're usually what?
Twenty to fifty feet.
Twenty to fifty feet, and cleared along the pipeline. And then that bottom picture is a picture of a gas regulator station, so if you pass anything that looks similar to that, that means that there's gas coming in there. Everybody know about 811, call before you dig? So, it's very important that if you're planting a shrub, or a tree, or if you're digging, you know, putting in a fence, anything that you're doing in your yard, you need to call 811, that is the damage prevention for the state of Georgia, actually, it's national, isn't it? And when you call them, they'll ask you a couple of questions about your project, where you're located, and then they send me a ticket, and that ticket not only comes to your city municipality, but it goes to the power companies in the area, it goes to the cable companies in the area, it goes to whoever might have something underground in your area. And then, once we get that ticket, we send a locator out, and we locate any of our water sewer gas lines that may be in your area. We use different ways to mark, sometimes you'll see something painted on the cement or the pavement. But the majority of the time, around here, you're gonna see a flag. Yellow flags mean gas, blue flags mean water. Green is for sewer, but normally green, we paint that on the, on the concrete or cement, wherever it's near.
Green triangle.
Yeah, triangle, and then you might see orange, which is like power.
Communication.
Yeah.
That side, maybe it's power.
Okay, so you'll see the different colors that indicate different things. This is not something that y'all would need. This is just talking about characteristics and properties of, of natural gas. Natural gas is non-toxic, however, if natural gas displaces the oxygen in a room, asphyxiation may occur. Natural gas in its natural state is colorless, odorless, tasteless, compressible, inflammable. We add mercaptan to natural gas to give it that rotten egg smell so that you'll, you can know that there's a leak somewhere. Natural gas requires the right mixture of oxygen and natural gas before ignition can occur. The amount of gas in the air must be within a specific range, the range is commonly referred to the explosive limit of natural gas. Natural gas explosive limits are expressed in either lower explosive limit or an upper explosive limit. What that means is the, the amount of gas has to be between 5% and 15% in the air in order for it to be explosive. If it is less than 5%, it's too lean to ignite, if it's more than 15%, it's too rich to ignite. If you're in a gas emergency, the percentage of gas can vary, can be very different according to what's going on around you. The amount of gas can change very quickly based on the wind, or how much gas is being introduced into the atmosphere. This is just talking about the specific gravity of natural gas versus propane, and this is just a chart that talks about the explosive ranges of the natural gas. This is something that, where they exploded, something, and we couldn't get that to work on their PowerPoint. If you detect signs that a leak may have occurred, you should take the following actions. Evacuate the premise immediately to a safe distance, and we'll talk about safe distance in a minute. Do not light a match or lighter, do not start an engine, don't use your telephone, don't use your cellphone, don't turn light switches on or off, don't get in your car in your garage and crank it. Don't do anything that might cause a spark. From a safe location, call 911 and report a possible leak. If a customer has called from their home and they suspect they have a gas leak, tell them to get outside. If they're on a landline, tell them do not hang the phone up, just lay the receiver down. And to get out of the house, tell them don't turn your lights off, don't operate your garage door, don't crank your car. And then this is basically for emergency responders, we have to do this with them as well, and this just tells the fire department things that they need to do and not do. If you're anywhere near a gas emergency, say maybe mayor, you're called to go to it because you're the mayor, watch where you park, don't park over a manhole cover. You know, there have been instances where the gas will migrate into the storm drain systems, and in Atlanta, there was an incident where the fire department had gone to a gas fire, it had actually ignited, and they parked this big beautiful fire truck over the top of a manhole, and it blew.
Oh, my God.
Destroyed, new fire truck, destroyed the fire truck, you know, people got hurt, you know, so it's very important, you know, not to park over anything like that or near it. This talks about evacuation distance, so our... Say, say we had a leak up at our city gate, which is 500 pounds or 600?
Four hundred, oh, it come in to 600.
So, 600 pounds coming into that city gate, say there was a leak there for some reason, and we've got a six-inch or eight-inch line up there?
Six.
We've got a... And we've got a six-inch line up there, so in order for you to be safe, you've gotta be 335 feet away from that. Now, if you're at home, or you're in town, you know, and you've got a, we've got 50 pounds of pressure coming out of there, and it's a four-inch line, then you need to be 45, 50 feet away, right?
They don't really give a about that low, because many are talking about high-pressure, high, high-pressure lines, falling from 400 pounds to a minimum of 183, city years, personal line, always.
This is for firefighters as well, but we'll go ahead and tell you, don't ever try to operate an underground gas valve. You know, as far as a citizen or, you know, official, you call 911. Firefighters are allowed to do different things because they're trained, and our guys, our gas guys are trained to do different things. And this is the same thing, water does not put out a natural gas fire, so... Don't turn your water hose on if you've got a gas fire. Our primary concern when dealing with a gas pipeline emergency of any kind is to protect people first, then property. Some things to remember are to rescue and evaluate people, and try to do that upwind of the gas leak. Contact the pipeline operator or 911, park your vehicles a safe distance from the incident and turn off your engines. Secure the scene, do not attempt to operate pipeline valves. Eliminate ignition sources, this says other than service valve and meter, but as a citizen, you don't do that. The firemen are allowed to do that, but, but, anybody else is legally allowed to do that. Eliminate ignition sources. If the fire is burning, you let it burn, you let it burn out, instead of trying to put it out. And then firefighters would use a fog spray instead of a full, full water hose. This is just one of the messages that we send out to our emergency responders and public officials. I've sent these to y'all many times when you have to fill out your other public awareness stuff. And this here is just Rusty's information, if you need to contact him or ask any further questions. So, we are done, and we thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate if you would fill those out, and that way, we won't get fined by the federal government, because that money comes out of the city.
Have you brought these off Davis office, or my?
Ashley.
Yes, we appreciate it, and anytime that, that we give you that public awareness stuff, I know you've all seen it, you know, I emailed it to you before, Ashley's brought it before, right?
Uh, yeah.
It's really important that you fill it out, I know it's redundant, I know it's the exact same thing every single year, but we are federally mandated to do that. And, and, you know, I have to send it out to our customers in their mailings four times a year. Every year, starting in January, I have several thousand people that I have to email this stuff and try to get surveys back from that, that aren't even our customers, that just live along the pipeline, because our pipeline comes all the way from almost Loganville, right there at 138, all the way back down. You know, every year, Rusty and I, in December, we have to ride the pipeline, we have to go door-to-door to places, we have to write down addresses of new houses and add to my list. And, you know, most of the time, I've seen that, you know, people say, I've seen that, but so they don't send it back to me. Well, I'm required to get so many hundred of these surveys back, sometimes I get almost nothing.
Wow.
So, people don't understand that, how important it is, you know, we write a letter to them, we explain all of that, but it still doesn't happen, but still, we're, we're held liable for that. So, if at least y'all would help me, I would appreciate it.
We will.
Because there is a certain thing that we have to fill out every year just for our public officials. And they're not very, when the feds come down in their big black vehicles and their suits, they're not very understanding, you know? Well, I don't know how you're gonna get it, but you're gonna have to get it.
They told us, you need to want to be more creative.
So, anyway, we really appreciate your time, thank you.
Well, thank y'all so much, great report.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
This pot over here is out.
Good morning.
And of course, Rick brought the biggest cup in.
Do y'all need one coffee?
Thank you, Rick.
You need someone in here?
No, I'm fine, I've...
I'll be as brief as I can. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about economic development activities. Since our last meeting, I was appointed to be the citizen representative for Morgan County on the Joint Development Authority. As such, I am currently under a nondisclosure agreement, which prevents me from speaking about an active project that we are in negotiations with right now, so I can't comment on who, what, or where it is. I am also on the advisory council for Morgan County, working on their future land use. You've seen articles, I'm sure, on electronic media or in the paper about how it doesn't necessarily fit with what's going on right now in Stanton Springs. Again, that was not anticipated when the last land use map was updated. I will be working with the county on trying to recognize there are some changes in the area. In Stanton Springs, we closed on most of the property that's, that's in the original park, and all available land is now either under contract or has been sold. The proceeds from the sale to Baymere, which was one of the other ones that's been assigned now to Morning Hornet, has that for original names, but that enabled the JDA to go ahead and purchase 665 acres on the north side of I-20. This council recently approved a service delivery strategy, which is required by law, because we picked up that additional land. The City of Buckhead and City of Bostwick have also approved it, as has the county. We're meeting with the City of Rutledge on the 14th to hopefully get them to approve the service delivery agreement as well. The law requires that the county and a majority of the municipalities within that county agree to the service delivery, and we have met that standard. So, it's not really gonna be anything other than we'd like to have.
So, what happens if the city decides not to sign, will it cause any kind of conflict?
It might have some impact on their ability to get L-MIG, to get permits, to do anything from the state standpoint, because DCA says basically, you either agree to service delivery agreements or, or not. If you do, if everybody does it, then it, you know, same, same, no harm, no foul. If you have one person that doesn't want to do that, and everybody else does, that one person can suffer some, some repercussions. Locally, we've worked about seven projects since September 1, and the latest being Monday, when David and I met with a Chinese heavy construction equipment manufacturer. A lot of those projects have been state projects, and they don't necessarily meet some of the standards and the criteria that we use when we're looking at projects. They're either extremely heavy water and wastewater treatment users, they would take up all our supply, or they want to build something that's too high, that we can't address from a firefighting standpoint. So, we don't normally take them to the next level. If it looks like it's just not gonna work, we just let them know it's not gonna work. But when you've got somebody that wants to use, you know, 3 million gallons of water, and we don't have that kind of capacity, you know, all you can do is say, you know, good luck, go find a river. The Sheriff's Youth Home, as you've known the headquarters, you see that under construction. We're currently in negotiations with a couple of other folks, some other development that would help support that, and, you know, the city is aware of those activities, and we're continuing to work with it. Interesting, our unemployment was at 2% for the month of October. Last year, at the same time, we were at 3.5% unemployment. The workforce is up about 340 people from that time, so we're up at 9,507 folks in our labor workforce. Unemployment dropped from 318 people to 192 this October. So, even though the U.S. Chamber of Commerce says less than half of the people that lost their jobs because of COVID have, you know, are, are looking for work or have returned to the workforce, that's not the case in Morgan County. We've actually seen the number of our workforce increase, and unemployment, like I said, at all-time low of 2%. We will kick off our externship program, which is with the Board of Education in January, and we hope to add a couple more workplaces for the teachers to go in and, and learn what it is to, to work in an industry. They take that information back and work it into their work plan, and it was, last year was very, very successful. It was our trials, first time we did it, so we're hoping to add some additional folks to it, possibly the hospital, to work with some of our medical providers and some of the teachers that teach those things. Leadership Morgan, we're about halfway over, and Karen Robertson from the city is involved in that, thank you very much for that. And our local government section will be held later this spring. Lastly, David and I have been working on a continuation of the lease for the property at 218 North Main Street, and I would like to go ahead and get that lease put back on the agenda if we can. David's not here today, but he can, he can tell you that we've already talked to Lee Abney, and Lee has drafted a new copy of the lease. So, we'd like to go ahead and get that in place that would cover us during the time that David's looking to exit and stay home. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I love the leadership in Morgan County.
We're staying busy, we're staying busy, well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
I will see you in about three months.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But next time, you better be able to disclose what's going on.
Well, I was hoping I was gonna be able to disclose now, but, you know, these things have a life of their own.
We may have to take you out and hogtie you.
Thank you, mom, I appreciate it. Karen?
Okay, so, a few years ago, there was a $2 fee approved for additional trash cans for residential customers. And so, after some discussion and research, we're, we're kinda revisiting this topic and decided that the more appropriate rate would be $6 per can. And so, we took into consideration the cost of the trash cans, as well as on heavy garbage days, it, it tends to make the truck have to take additional trips. days, uh, it, it tends to make the trucks have to take additional trips to the landfill. But we also looked at the surrounding areas and found that they were actually charging anywhere from $8 to $16 for extra trash cans as well. Um, so $6 is still lower than the surrounding areas, but it does help recoup some of the costs involved of people having additional trash cans. Um, I also hope that it also will encourage people to recycle more, um, to cut down on the trash going to the landfill. Uh, so currently, I am working on, uh, compiling a list with the sanitation department, uh, to get a more accurate number of, uh, customers that have multiple trash cans, um, to where we can either, uh, start charging them the $6 if approved, or of course, the $2 that was already approved in the years past. Um, we're also looking at efficiency and to where, go, more moving towards making it mandatory that customers have city-issued garbage cans, instead of either having their garbage, um, sitting on the side of the one can that they have on the ground, or using a personal trash can that they went to the store and bought. Uh, this will allow our sanitation workers to utilize the tipper that is on the truck, um, as well as save some time with them.
That, that, excuse Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
That explains to me why my, I've got a big, heavy garbage can, and I have to push it up a hill for about 500 feet, so I just started taking the bags out, because there's only three or four bags in there, and putting them beside my neighbors, and they dump the neighbors but leave my bag, so I'll, I'll start pushing the thing up the hill. Gosh, I was coming to ask you that question.
Um, so, uh, this week, there, there was a little miscommunication, but, um, if you have gotten phone calls about people's trash not being picked up in a situation like that, they are going back around today and picking up, uh, what they did miss, um, until we can get, uh, more accurate, um, number as well as furnish people city-issued trash cans that need it.
So I guess, go ahead, Chris.
Mayor, I was just going to ask, we talked at some point about maybe doing some composting or looking into composting, which I think will help mitigate some of the, I know recycling's a, a, a thing, but I, I would encourage people, I don't know to educate themselves on composting, because that's another way to kind of reduce the amount that goes into the landfill. And I don't know, I know that some, some nonprofits are kind of working on that, but maybe there could be some more education around that, because that's a good way to, and, and you can use that compost in your, in your gardens.
Now, we, we do not, uh, pay, uh, the county, um, landfill for residential garbage, uh, but if it's causing additional trips on our truck, um, to go to the landfill to dump, just to be able to finish the route for the day, then that's the extra charge for the fuel and the wear and tear on the trucks as well.
Well, I know that they're having a garbage kind of crisis too, I've heard, so it's like it'll be a big issue, I think.
So, um, but, and that's where we feel that maybe going up to $6 per extra can, uh, would help.
So when you want these fees to be in place, by the first of the year, are you still working on it, or you just?
I should have, uh, accurate list maybe in the next two weeks, um, and then, uh, it's just a matter of applying the rate to, uh, the customer's account. And so I was hoping to be able to do that, um, at the end of this month, but, uh, might have to wait till the end of January to start billing.
Okay, okay.
So that's just like for an ex, like if you order an extra can, that's what it's going to cost, is that?
Right. So the cans are, on average, about $50 per can.
Yeah.
That we pay.
Gotcha.
Um, but this also will not apply to customers that the, once or twice, might have extra garbage.
Yeah.
These guys, they ride the route every day, they can tell you exactly who normally does not have that much garbage, whether they had, you know, the holidays, a family event, and it was just that one time. That, this will not apply to those people.
That's good.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
So this just applies to the people that actually ask for an extra trash can, right?
Yes, we do have people that come into City Hall and ask for additional trash cans, so yes, those, those people, but as well as people that have one trash can, and it's full, but they might have multiple bags sitting around it.
Around it.
Where they need another trash can.
Okay, so just six do, so $6, you said, right?
Yes.
So how much?
So it'll only be, so, so the charge, yeah, per, per month, so the charge right now is if you recycle, your garbage rate is $12, but if you don't recycle, it's $16.
Right.
And so you're, everybody is furnished with one trash can, but then if you have to have an additional trash can, then that's where that $6 will come in in addition to the normal rate.
Okay, so in surrounding counties like Greensboro, do you know how much they charge for a, a extra trash can?
So there's, we found out there's some, um, municipalities that outsource, they don't actually, uh, collect trash themselves, and so we looked at social circle for an extra trash can is $16.
$10?
$16.
$16?
$16 in addition to their normal rate.
Okay, so how did you come up with just six from Madison?
Speaking with David, and I know that, of course, it, like I said a few years ago, we did the $2, um, but he didn't want to go up to what other surrounding areas really are charging, because we're not aware if they actually pay landfill fees or not. And so, um, if they're having to pay landfill fees, $16 might cover their cost at the landfill. But right now, we don't pay residential garbage landfill fees.
Okay.
And that's why.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I think I've mentioned this before, from the recycling standpoint, you know, those, to me, those little boxes, uh, that they're continually overflow, filled, and the wind comes up, it blows the garb, is there any possibility that we could get a, a can, like a big, a blue can, that we could put our recycle in or something so that we could keep it? I have a spare garbage can that I've, I made it my recycle bin, so I've got recycle on it, so I put it out on recycle day, and they do pick it up.
Right. Um. I, we can get with the recycling company, um, to see what other cans they do, uh, offer, but right now, people just come in and they'll, if they recycle more than just one of those bins, we'll be happy to give them an extra bin.
Well, they could possibly use that garbage can, uh, for $2 and put recycle in it and put R on top of it, because they do pick it up. I mean, we might be able to encourage people to do that.
Right, so, um, going back to, to Councilmember Reed, Covington was $8 and Winder was 14. So it kind of is a.
Right.
But we don't know, we didn't find out whether or not, like I said, the, if they're having to pay landfill fees or not, and that could factor into the reason why they're higher.
So Madison is still giving a good.
We're giving a good price, but it's, it's a little low, but it's good, it's good.
It's a little low, you said?
It's a little low.
Well, we can start here.
We can start here and go anywhere, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Um, can this be put on the consent agenda?
Sure. Can I get a, a not from?
I'd prefer it be just a regular agenda item, because there was no attachment or anything for you all to review today. So since you haven't looked over anything, and it's an amendment to the ordinance, I'd rather it be a regular item. It would be a short vote, but not a consent.
Would we need a attachment with this?
Yes.
Wouldn't we?
It will be a schedule of fees change, and you guys will have to look at it and approve it and sign it.
Okay, we'll put, okay.
Yes, ma'am, Ashley, thank you.
Yes, we'll do what you say.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Uh, voting process of public service appointments, I think we all got a copy.
Yes.
A clerk sent us one. You have an extra copy, but I don't know if I have.
Everybody has. Okay.
Um, okay, so I know in the past, there have been a couple instances where we've had more candidates applying for commission positions, um, or board positions than we've had available spots. And so there's been, um, interest expressed in the past for coming up with something that's a little more formal, that everybody knows this is how voting's going to go, so everybody's on the same page, we can keep up with who's received what vote. So this is a little something, um, can, you know, creative mind help, or put this together. And so, um, I sent it yesterday, I don't know if you've had a chance to read over it.
I did.
I did, yeah.
Um, did, first off, do you have any thoughts? Do you, do you think it makes sense?
It does make sense.
I think.
I think it's really.
Yeah. It'll take a, a little bit longer, and, I mean, I don't think this is going to happen every time. Sometimes there, there are not enough, sometimes, you know, I'd say probably 20% of the time you have more than you needed. But this would give us a chance to go through it slowly, it'd be clear who was voted on. I would still, in every instance, call out each council member's name, and you would name those you're voting into position, whether it's two for two open positions, or if it's, we have five for only three open positions. So, um, just wanted to put this in front of you all, so you could read over it, kind of have a feel for it, get prepared for it. I know we have public service appointments coming up on the.
December?
December agenda?
December agenda?
Yes, um, I'm not sure what those applicants are looking like just yet, if we're going to have more.
At least one, but it's going to have multiple.
Okay.
So would you want this to start this year or at the first of next year?
I think we should start this the next time we have public service appointments, so that we make sure it's clear, everybody feels like they're given a fair chance, you know, one person just doesn't move to appoint all three, and then you all vote on it, but maybe you don't agree with all those three, so.
I agree.
The House of Members, they have that charge, you know?
Exactly.
Yes, exactly, I agree.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think it, when you have multiple ones like that, it gives, you know, a lot of times we, so, one officer will jump in and jump right on somebody, and, and Eric had brought this up, and I, and I think this is, it gives us an opportunity to li, listen to the presentation of all the candidates, look at, look at it, and then we can vote, and we can narrow it down that way, and I think, I think it's a fair way to do it.
Fair, that way to do it.
But, you know, when I first read this, Mr. Mayor, I thought she was asking us to vote on our snacks at the, at the meeting, but, uh, but, but I did understand it after I read up above.
Um, and, you know, lots, so you see on the example, Captain Crunch and Lucky Charms are finally the reappointment, um, but then you have three additional.
Yeah.
Who want that last spot, because typically, that is how it's voted upon, the reappointment is typically granted, but then it's that fight for that last spot, so.
I actually like it a lot, because I feel like everyone should have their own say on who they're voting for.
Yeah.
So I, I really commend you, Ken, for Captain Crunch and Lucky Charms.
Great job.
Any other questions, suggestions?
Look at five times first test.
Yes.
Eric, do you have any thoughts? Councilmember Joyce?
Who's Tiger? No, uh, I, just as a reminder to y'all, I've looked at the city website the other day, and I believe there's at least six of our very important commissions that are looking for, uh, vacancies to be filled, it was either six or seven, it seemed like really a lot, so I think we can all, as council members, play a role in, uh, encouraging our constituents to, uh, to apply for those. We get so much important work, and we have so much city civic involvement from people in our commissions, I think it's really important, and I, we seem to have a lot of vacancies right now, so maybe we can all do a little work on that before the next round of appointments, uh, next month, I guess.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. Ashley?
Okay.
Well, uh, using those comments after our work session, but I'd like to remind our council about our parade next Saturday. Uh, Karen, we are supposed to meet at the, I guess, middle school, what time?
Um, I believe Colleen said at 3:00.
3:00 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll confirm with her.
Okay. And don't forget that shred, Saturday shred there, if you have something important paper to be shredded, from 10 to 12, I believe, in our city clock.
That's correct.
Is there any other comments from our, and I would like all our council members, if you would, uh, please come, uh, prepare for an outing after our council meeting, uh, on the 13th, I think it is, on the 13th. I hope all our council members will be present, and hopefully.
The 13th or the 14th?
It's the 14th, 13th.
13th, yeah.
And we were trying to make our council meeting as short as possible, if we possibly could. Is that okay?
Sounds like fun.
All right.
I plan to me.
Thank you so much. That's it, I'll leave, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're adjourned, Mr. Mayor?
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Mr. Mayor, I am also.